It is four o'clock. We'll call this meeting to order. I will start with the roll call. Vicki, please.
Mayor Sue Patterson.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Warren Dickert.
Present.
Councillor Harold Fleet.
Present.
Councillor Dave Hawking.
Present.
Councillor Carol Hudson.
Present.
Councillor Brandon Cable.
Present.
Councillor Susan Sackel.
Present.
Thank you. All members are present and accounted for. Our land acknowledgement, as we work toward reconciliation with indigenous people, we begin our meeting today by respectfully acknowledging that we are situated on the traditional territory of the Anishinaabe Nation, the people of three fires known as Ojibwe, Odawa, and Potawatomi nations, and further give thanks to the Chipewas of Sogin and the Chipewas of Nawash, now known as the Sogin-Ojibwe Nation, as the traditional keepers of this land. So, welcome to our committee of the whole meeting for Monday, June the fifth. Good afternoon, council, staff, guests, the viewing public, and the media. Council, does anyone have a disclosure of pecuniary interest or a conflict of interest? Of course, if one should arise during the meeting, you may declare it then. On our agenda, we have item four additions or deletions, and we do not have any this afternoon. So, item five is our health and safety message brought to us by Councillor Sack. Please.
Thank you, your worship. As a former lifeguard and swim instructor, I'm pleased to present the swimming safety tips. According to a recent Life Saving Society report, nine percent of all water fatalities happen in backyard pools, and roughly one-third happen in lakes or ponds. Most drownings occur from May to September. With summer swimming season fast approaching, the Canada Safety Council is reminding people to be careful and to take measures to prevent drowning. Young children should be actively supervised by a responsible adult when in or near a body of water. Always keep children within an arm's length. Drowning can occur very quickly and unexpectedly. Ensure children do not have easy access to bodies of water, and that backyard pools are fenced to prevent unsupervised access. Keep a safe distance from moving bodies of water like rivers, rapids, and lakes so that you're not unintentionally swept in. Learn to swim properly. Don't swim alone. Have someone around you if you're, even if you're an experienced swimmer, and always wear a life jacket when you're on a boat.
Thank you, councillor. Item six is delegations. We do not have any this afternoon. Item seven, staff reports. The first one, seven point one, is report PB thirteen dash twenty-three. The subject is the appointment of municipal law enforcement officer. It's from Ken Campbell, our municipal law enforcement officer, and I need a mover and seconder to put this on the floor. Councillor Cable and Deputy Mayor Dickert. Ken, the floor is yours. And you are on mute.
My apologies. It's been a while. Thank you, your worship.
We can hear you now. Thank you.
Section fifteen of the Police Services Act as amended provides council with the authority to appoint municipal law enforcement officers who are peace officers for the purpose of enforcing municipal bylaws. So, in the past, municipal staff have been appointed as municipal law enforcement officers to allow the enforcement for specific matters related to parking under part two of the Provincial Offences Act. In nineteen ninety-eight, Parks and Recreation staff members were appointed by council to enforce certain provisions within the town's parking bylaw at the recreation facility at two sixty-nine Seventh Avenue. In December twenty twenty-two, members of our Public Works and Parks and Rec staff were appointed to enforce parking-related matters on either town-specific properties or public roadways for the purposes of assisting with parking enforcement throughout the winter months. The appointment of Andrew Wilken, in accordance with the Police Services Act, as a municipal law enforcement officer would permit him to issue part two provincial offences in relation to parking infractions within the town of Hanover pursuant to the town's parking bylaw. There are no direct financial implications to the town associated with this report. The link to the strategic plan is number two, community, and number four, sustainable municipal operations. And the recommendation is that report PB dash one-three dash two-three, appointment of municipal law enforcement officer be received, and that council pass bylaw three-two-six-seven dash two-three to appoint Andrew Wilken as a municipal law enforcement officer in accordance with section fifteen of the Police Services Act nineteen ninety as amended. That is my report. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Ken. Council, any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, that is carried. Item seven point two is report PB fourteen dash twenty-three. The subject is the fire hall, the final design and project direction. It's from Andrew Wilken, our Director of Building and Planning and CBO, and I need a mover and seconder to put this on the floor. Councillor Hawking and Councillor Hudson. Okay, chief. Sorry, Andrew. We'll get that one right.
He can have it if he wants. In accordance with the approved fire hall charter, the project team has provided some updates to council, specifically June sixth, twenty twenty-two, and November seventh of twenty twenty-two. The most recent one being the award of the fire hall design to Dolly Engineering. Since that contract was awarded for the design and contract administrative services, the consultant, Dolly Engineering, has been working diligently with their subconsultants to start to piece together a design for us for our new fire hall. A considerable time has been spent on the site itself. It was easy to eyeball the site as you drove by to realize there was some grading changes, but until the numbers were run, you know, we were really unsure of the requirements of the site grades themselves. Over the last few months, it's been realized that there is a requirement for retaining walls on both the east and the west side of the property, which does have some effect on the overall contract amount or tendered amount of a fire hall when the time does come. Site works itself is estimated at about one point four million dollars. Town staff and Dolly Engineering, Hanover Fire Department, Building Department mainly have met with Dolly Engineering on multiple occasions just to ensure that the layout facilitates really all the end users' needs, mainly the fire department itself. Prior to the project fall twenty twenty-four completion, which is our timeline right now, it should be noted that an extension from Second Street east of Fourteenth, at least beyond where the north entrance of the fire hall will be, needs to be completed to allow for the fire department access on both the north and the west side of that property, both Second Street and First Street. These requirements have been discussed with Public Works about the potential for a twenty twenty-four capital project. While the building code does not require for the building itself to be sprinkled based on the amount of equipment in there, we have discussed at introducing a sprinkler system in this building simply for assisting with saving some contents if there ever was a fire at the fire hall itself. If there's questions at the end, there are some limitations to fighting a fire when there is solar panels on a building. I'll let fire explain that if there is any questions on how a fire needs to be fought if there is solar involved. If you reference the attached, there is a budgeting model provided by Dolly Engineering. It's appendix B in your package. It's a complete high-level breakdown per division per costs of the work. This would be created from future project costs as well as a consultant reaching out to sub-trades that they've used in the past to get some accurate numbers to facilitate where our costs are for this current project. One thing that's not in the budget that Dolly Engineering included was additional items, including the security system, sound, audio, and visual equipment, miscellaneous equipment for the fire department itself, as well as furnishings. To rationalize the budget, we do not have specific pricing for those items right now. We've estimated that's about four hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. That number is carried in each of the three options I'm going to explain in a second. So, there's an apples-to-apples type of comparison. So, therefore, in front of you, there are three options. Option one is really what's been discussed since the charter was first produced, and really the mandate of the steering committee, and that is the completion of a net-zero fire hall. Dolly Engineering's budget of this fire hall is seven million dollars. The four hundred ninety-five thousand dollars I initially explained is added on to that to give an actual cost of the construction as a whole, which brings it up to seven million four hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. Option two would be more of a hybrid model. Because there would be requirement for both geothermal and solar panels to produce a net-zero fire hall, you cannot do the geothermal after, you know, really that is drilling into the earth, and that's just, it's not an option to do at a future date. So, that work would have to be done in this hybrid model, first and foremost. The building will be designed to facilitate solar panels at a future date. Those panels are estimated at a cost of about six hundred thousand dollars, which is how we've got to the budget of six million eight hundred ninety-five thousand dollars for that hybrid model for a fire hall. It would be somewhat sustainable at its completion. However, until the solar was added at a future date, it would not be a net-zero fire hall technically. We would call that net zero already. And option three is really not the direction we've talked about at all to this point, but we thought it was important to show what the cost of a base building would be for this typical fire hall typically like this with the furnishings as well, which comes to six million nine, three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Staff continue to consider funding, modeling, and grant opportunities. Some of these opportunities, we would be successful for only a year after the building is complete and we can provide data that the building actually is a net zero. Additionally, Hanover Fire and Building and other departments are looking at really any other funding opportunity we may be able to provide. Hanover Fire Department is working towards potentially a sponsorship program. That's not in this report. That's something that Jeff's looking into a little bit more and may get rolled out at a future date, and that would assist with some of the helping cover some of the costs for the training portions itself. The financial implications. Previously, there were funds in there for this in the twenty twenty-two budget. Based on the length of time it took us to do the feasibility study, most of that funding, the funds moved over into twenty twenty-three, which is essentially what we're pulling from right now. As noted in PB zero four dash twenty-three, originally, staff used a construction cost projection of six million dollars to calculate the cost of the build. Dolly Engineering at the time of the RFP for the design was really the only consultant that said that was more, really a feasible amount for an estimated construction cost. Based on our capital project budget for the fire hall, five million one hundred ninety thousand four hundred dollars has been estimated as a total project cost. This number was established very early in the project, pre-two thousand twenty-two, and has not been revised to reflect construction costs currently. Quite frankly, really until we had a consultant onboard that could provide a breakdown of the budget or the cost of construction, really it was somewhat difficult to extrapolate how much it was going to cost per square foot when there really isn't only a handful of net-zero fire halls that have been completed. As per the updated projections detailed above, to build a net-zero fire hall, the cost is estimated at seven million four hundred ninety-five thousand dollars, and should council not be comfortable with this direction, the other options two and three were provided as alternatives if that is the direction. As previously noted, staff are considering funding opportunities, and those will be brought at future meetings. The links to the strategic plan is economic development, community, environment, and sustainable municipal operations. And the recommendation is that PB fourteen dash twenty-three Hanover Fire Hall design and project direction be received, and that the project proceeds as per option one as a net-zero fire hall for the completion of the tendering process. And I'll answer any questions, yeah.
Thank you, Andrew. Okay, let's start. Questions, comments? Councillor Fleet.
Thank you, worship, and thank you, Andrew, for that report. This might be a question for Chris. Do we know what type of funding or programs are available for this project, or we won't know till the building's actually up and running?
We are aware of a number that we're looking to apply for now, but as Andrew stated, there are some that will only consider funding once you've proven that it's a net-zero facility. But we've already applied for a number, and we're looking at more as well.
Is there more funding available for if we are building a net zero than not building that's true?
Through your worship. Yes, obviously, I mean, the original funding model that we talked about, or the funding went out there, the green municipal funding, we could have received three hundred ninety-five thousand dollars in funding, but that would only be applicable if we can show that that is a net zero building one year after its completion. So, yes, some funding, some funding will be lined up with the net zero component. Other funding for capital projects that may be available through other agencies may just be for municipal facility, for instance.
And the fund raise, raising opportunities, a sponsorship, that's not really directed to the build. That would be more so for equipment or, say, sponsoring a room or...
Through your worship. Yeah, so there's a training component in the station, so what we devised is a plan for organizations, mostly commercial industrial, that they can purchase certain sections of the training area to get some advertising. We've had some interest, and so we thought this was a good dovetail in order to create some income and also have some local, local community involvement.
Thank you.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Dickert.
Thank you, worship, and thank you, Andrew. So, the net zero option is about one point one million more than the the base building, and you said we have about three hundred and, was it three fifty, three hundred fifty thousand potential grant dollars to go net zero? Was that the number?
Yep, give or take, yep.
And what, you know, by going net zero, what are the long-term estimated savings on energy costs, or are there any, or is this simply a eight hundred thousand dollar upgrade that doesn't have a payback?
Through your worship. To be quite honest, I would have to, that J.L. Richard study that we provide, that feasibility study gave a payback period. Maybe if anybody can recall, I want to say it said without funding, you were looking at about twenty-seven-year payback period if you did not receive additional funding for the net zero construction component. So, say we've got three hundred and fifty or four hundred thousand for net zero funding, that obviously helps reduce that and shortens up the payback period, but yeah, absolutely, there's a lengthy payback timeline. If you look at it just in terms of the financial aspect of it, yeah.
And in the, like, the heat pumps, the geothermal and that, what's the life expectancy? I wouldn't think they'd be much more than a twenty-five-year life expectancy on them, would there?
Through your worship, I would have to confirm exactly on the geothermal. I want to say I've heard fifty, maybe, but the solar panels itself wouldn't be much more than that payback period we're talking about. That timeline, payback timeline.
And then I guess my next question is if we, if we proceed with a project of this cost, what does that do to our municipal financing? And this is more for Chris, I believe. How do we finance it if we proceed? What does it do to our credit rating or whatever? That rating they give us where we have to stay within certain bounds of debt income.
Through your worship. The annual repayment limit is what you're talking about. We have over three point eight million dollars that we can pay off in a year towards any loan. Right now, we're paying one hundred and seventy thousand for the P and H Center. That will be paid in full in August twenty twenty-five. Based on the annual repayment limit, we could borrow up to forty-seven million three hundred thousand dollars at a five percent rate over twenty-five years and be well within our annual repayment limit. We'd never want to get to that point. I did a quick calculation between seven point five million, if we round up to seven point five, a twenty-five year at four point five two percent is about four hundred six thousand. The reason I use four point five two is that was the infrastructure Ontario. My, my gut feeling is not to go with infrastructure Ontario because you don't want to lock in for that long a period because you might want to do a five year, and in five years, you might see a better rate that comes in like we did for the P and H Center. So, a thirty year is about four hundred sixty-one thousand dollars a year. Twenty-five years, five oh six, that's getting absolutely no funding whatsoever, not using any reserves, not using any money. Again, we're going to look at about at least three hundred fifty thousand. We have savings already this year of over three hundred and seventy thousand between two of Ron's infrastructure projects, so that that money can go towards the twenty twenty-three amounts. Because if you looked at our budget in twenty twenty-three, all of it was going to be borrowed for the money this year. Everything was being borrowed over two years. So, we're, we're, we're working with our MPP. We've, we've been in contact with them, looking for hopefully the same as we had for the P and H Center, where it was one-third, one-third, one-third would be a lot easier for us to be able to put that money through.
So, if I took those numbers, we're about four hundred eighty thousand dollars in repayment then to do this per year, is that what you said?
Between four hundred and sixty to five hundred and six thousand a year. That's doing the full seven point five million. You would save if you went to the lowest base rate, about that one point one million dollars, you would save about just under seventy-five thousand a year over twenty-five years.
So, on us, and seventy thousand dollars is about one percent increase on our taxes, correct?
At least, yes. Actually, it's eighty-four thousand one hundred forty-three dollars.
So, it'd be about seven percent on the average tax, or the tax bill?
Yes, but you have to keep in mind that we have a hundred and seventy thousand that will be coming off in twenty twenty-five. So, once we get this whole project done, which will be the end of fall twenty twenty-four, our actual loan starts in twenty twenty-five. So, we, we lose the one seventy, we put that back on. So, technically, we only need three hundred and thirty thousand dollars of that additional money. So, it would be about a four percent based on what we currently do.
The four percent, but that's not considering any other?
That four percent on your levy just to do this.
Just to do the fire.
Plus, we've also talked about the asset management. We're supposed to have one point five percent levy every year, so right there, you've already covered everything. Assuming we get no funding, we are definitely doing our due diligence to get as much funding as possible. We can also get low interest loans. I think it's through the Green Municipal Fund where they'll give you a loan of up to eighty percent, up to a maximum of five million, and you can, they'll also give you a grant for twenty percent. But again, those are lower rates, and we're checking all these different items out. But again, this is, this report is so that you go out and get competition for RFP tender. It'll come back then. At that point, you're going to say yay or nay whether you're going to move forward if it comes over seven point five. Obviously, it has to come back to council.
All right, other questions? Councillor Cable.
Thank you, worship. Andrew, I'm just wondering, for the viewing public, you mentioned about the one point four million dollars for site work. I'm just wondering if you could just clarify for those that are listening, and maybe we didn't read the report, what all would be included in that one point four million? As it seems like quite a large number, but would you be able to highlight some of those items for us?
Through your worship. Sure, just let me find it. Typically, site works is ultimately everything outside of the building. So, it would be any granular fill that needs to be brought in or excavating curbs and sidewalks, asphalt. In our case, retaining wall is a huge portion of it. That would, those would be typical examples of a site, a site works, and you know, on a typical building with a flat, a flat site, you would have your curbs and your sidewalks and your asphalt, but this is a little bit different just based on the grading. As well in there is the reworking of a stormwater manager, stormwater pond, because it's a little wider, then we're going to need it to take a little bit of space. The, the capacity still needs to stay the same, so it needs to get reworked a little bit as well. So, those would be items that would be in a Division Two site works budget.
Excellent, thank you. And would you also be able to speak to the Emergency Operations Center, which is going to be part of that building? So, is it built to a different standard than a regular building in order to have the EOC built directly into the fire hall?
Through your worship, Jeff, you can jump in if you'd like, but the fire hall and as an EOC, it is built as a post-disaster building, which does require some additional requirements for structure withholding. If there's anything beyond that, you?
Yeah, through your worship, the benefit really is that right now neither the fire hall nor the EOC is built to post-disaster. So, if we did have an emergency, there's a chance that it wouldn't be here. So, having the location in the fire hall that's built post-disaster means it's going to be there because it's built to a higher standard.
Excellent, thank you. I think personally, I am in favor of option one. I think we've always talked about building a net zero energy fire hall. I think it's something that's, that, you know, goes with our idea of Hanover being a progressive and forward-thinking community. And I do believe that in that J.L. Richards report, it talked about a ten-year payback for the electricity rates if we were to get somewhere in the six hundred thousand dollar ballpark of a grant. So, certainly, I think that the long-term payoff for our energy savings will outweigh the upfront cost.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Councillor Fleet.
Thank you.
And then our CEO.
Thank you, worship. Jeff, when it comes to fighting a solar panel fire, it's impossible?
Through your worship. Not impossible. However, you can't put crews inside. So, when we talked about a fire suppression system, we started looking at the fire hall and realizing that in the bay areas, there's well over seven million dollars worth of equipment in the trucks and the equipment that's on the trucks. By the time, if it started with solar panels on, by the time we get there and assemble, one, that's all of our equipment, we probably wouldn't have time or, or safety to get the stuff out. So, the suppression system of hundred and twenty thousand was more of an insurance investment to make sure that if any fire happened in there where all of our equipment was, it would help to reduce the impact to that, to the cost of the equipment that was inside. But with, with solar panels on the roof, what happens is you have to be very careful because the heat produced by the fire makes it entry is very limited because of the extra weight.
And one, a question for Chris, and so say if we would qualify for money from the province and the, and the fed, feds, would we, what would our payment be down to then? A third of the four hundred, four hundred, five hundred thousand?
It depends on what our borrowing capacity or rate that we're going to be, so let's figure on about two thousand five hundred. We would definitely be around the hundred and seventy to hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year versus the five hundred. So, to get that one-third, one-third, very rare these days. You don't see them a lot. So, that's why we're going after federal funding for certain areas, and then there's also provincial funding for others areas, so we might have to do two or three separate ones.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Worship. Just, you know, uh when I look at the numbers of what we approved twenty twenty two or whatever, you know, it was five point uh two million roughly, and now we're up to seven million. Does anybody have a feel for what it's going to be? I'm I'm concerned that, you know, even at the rate of inflation, you add another six percent to that, that's another four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Uh are we actually going to be well over the eight million by the time this project is up and running? And and I know there's no way of answering that accurately, but is there a I got feel for what that might be?
Uh through your worship, I would say this is the first time we actually have a hard budget that's been done specifically for this fire hall. I mean, prior to this, you know, previous reports really hadn't dove into the user needs and the layout and even maybe to a degree, the size and the cost of the net zero. Like this really is the first time we've had somebody look at what our floor plan is that we've developed the cost of that floor plan and the site specific costs. Um so with Dolly Engineering actually speaking to, you know, potentially some some subtrades, some of which likely would be bidding the job and actually getting some hard costs from them to develop this budget. Um he's explained to us that he's, he feels very good about the budget that he's provided. Obviously, you know, in two months, if this were to proceed as option one and the tendering process occurred, uh we would be, we would be back to council with a hard number that this, the tendering process was complete. Here's the results. Uh hopefully, it is six million, eight hundred thousand dollars is their number. I was, but if that answers your question, this is really the first time we've had somebody been able to dive in and and really look at what we want and what it will cost.
All right, oh, go ahead and then and Sherry.
Additionally, I uh Dolly Engineering had put in there um a contingency amount, I think it was three hundred thousand or something along the lines of that. So that is built into the seven million, you know, but I I'm not to say that that's a savings that we would never use. As we know, every project has unforeseen things as that occurs, but that is built into the cost right now as well.
Okay, Sherry.
Thank you, Worship. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so one of the benefits of when you are virtual, I can open up reports. So I have the jail Richards uh report in front of me where it talks about the payback. So I'm just gonna read verbatim what is in that report. It says the net zero design is expected to cost approximately seven hundred dollars meter per meter squared more than the baseline design, which itself is reasonably energy efficient as benefit fits a new building. The annual savings from reduced utility cost in brackets reduced to near zero because the rooftop um array produces a hundred percent of the required electricity annually is approximately twenty one, thirty five per meter squared. This yields a simple payback of approximately thirty three through years, longer than can reasonably be justified on solely financial investment grounds, but still much shorter than the expected life of the building. Also of note, a reasonable modest subsidy of construction, the construction costs of five hundred per meter squared would reduce the simple payback to a very manageable nine point five years. So again, that's specifically from the J L Richards report, which was completed in twenty twenty one, I believe, correct, Andrew? Um I'm just looking for the date on here.
Twenty twenty two, Sherry.
Okay, thank you, twenty twenty two. Yes, so not quite, yeah, September twenty twenty two, so not quite that uh eight months out type thing. If that helps to answer some of those payback questions.
Thanks, Sherry. Anything further? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Um as far as the the actual design of the building, is there, like, are we overdesigned in anywhere? Is there any opportunities to make any modifications that would reduce the cost any in any way, shape or form? And I know you don't want to under design it and then find yourself ten years down the road having to make changes. But I just uh just asking that question, it's like say that we're talking about a substantial amount of money. So just want to make sure I'm very comfortable with what we're doing.
Through you, your worship, we spent considerable time looking at both the the present NFPA standards, our present needs and what we thought would be our future needs. Um I think this takes into account everything uh that we can think of. It's not, it's it's, there isn't space in here that we are not going to use. Um but we also kept in mind that we don't want to make this thing huge with stuff that we may or may not use in the future. Realizing that that the municipality is eventually going to grow and so are the needs of the department. We tried to factor it all in to this build. Um a lot of this stuff is very standard. You've got your clean side and your dirty side and and we used uh previous um blueprints as a guide. We also did some interviews. What would you do different? What would you not do? What would you do again? So that was really helpful as well. Um so we we we've spent a number of months making sure that this is not too big and not too small. If that helps.
Okay, any other coun- counselor Hudson?
Andrew, you had mentioned the retaining wall, which is a a fair size uh dollar value for this. Can you just explain and describe that a little better? So I'm I have a clearer understanding of that.
Oh sure, through through your worship, well, the site from west to east uh has quite the slope. Or if you ever drive down that part of First or Second Street, it really falls off. On this site specifically, I think it's about three or three and a half meters from one side of the property to the other. So um a cross section really shows the cut. And to make that up, you obviously have to build a building reasonably flat, you know? So you have to pull out fill, you have to bring in additional fill at times, just depending on what uh those cut requirements are. Um as well uh to for slope stability, you need to maintain a one to one or a two to one ratio for horizontal versus vertical drop of a hill hill per se. If you can't meet that, you need to introduce a retaining wall. You need to hold the soil back from the high side from the low side. So what we have found now is uh those are fairly significant retaining walls. And on the east side specifically, it's at least ten feet in depth.
Thank you.
Okay, other comments or questions? Counselor Fleet?
Thank you, Worship. Um I've worked the net zero uh fire hall right from the beginning and I'm struggling a bit with the solar panels because what I understand in your report here, we are building a fire hall, putting solar panels, panels on the roof, and there's seven million dollars worth of equipment in the fire hall that we can't get at if um there would happen to be a solar panel fire. And I, just what I've read and heard in the past, that solar panels are very hard to fight. And you know, that's a lot, a seven million dollar loss is a lot of money. I know we have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of, you know, insurance to ensure that, but uh how do we get in to get our equipment out if solar panels are in fire? And I'm struggling with that. And the other question I have is, well, maybe let you.
Through you, your worship. Uh if the solar panels were on fire, I I misunderstood your question. Uh I thought you were talking about a fire in the station. So if the solar panels are on fire, then then because of the steel structure, we will have time to get equipment out. The suppression system that we've been talking about will add more time. If the fires in the fire hall, that's what I mean about um entry is is limited because as the heat builds inside, the the structure itself begins to weaken and the the additional weight on the ceiling would then be a a collapse potential. So it's a different scenario if the if the panels are on fire, but uh you know, correct me if I'm wrong, that's very rare. Very rare. That helps.
Through your worship, uh just to add to that, I mean, we did somewhat go down the path of looking at what it could look like if the panels weren't on the building. There really isn't the space on the site. You've seen a solar field before, not that we have the space there for that, as well as the considerable cost to build a structure to facilitate those panels. Um if if we did have the space, we we did look at that, if we could potentially keep them off the building uh but on the site to help produce, uh that just wasn't an option based on the site limitations.
Uh thank you, Worship, and this question might be to Ron and I wonder what would the cost, is any idea of the cost of extending Second Street to Fourteenth? Uh I know it's not in this budget, but I'm just wondering if any ballpark uh I?
So you mean Eighteenth, right, okay.
No, we've just got coal bikes to be putting pricing together for that Eighteenth Extension, Second Street through to the fire hall. So a number I do not have from them yet.
Thank you.
Counselor Hawking?
Uh this is to Chris. Um when you look at the final cost, do you do uh attribute any value to the existing fire hall that won't be of any use or and the lot that uh that goes with it as a potential value from a from a real estate perspective?
Through you, your worship, uh there's been no discussion yet on that building. It is not conducive to being used. There's no insulation and anything, it would have to probably be knocked down. But then again, it's prime parking lot, prime area for the downtown. So until council decides what they wish to do with that area, I can't say that we're going to sell it because it'll be the town land. We're going to keep it, we're not going to give it away for some other use. And um to go back to Counselor or sorry Deputy Mayor Dickert's question about the five point two million, that was originally done based on, I think it was that uh description you received from another municipality when they did that back in two thousand and eighteen. So it was like a four point five, so we added a percentage to that. Keep in mind, we're not adding the four hundred ninety five thousand dollars that uh Andrew had talked about for the other equipment. We were just working on the building at the five point two at that time. If that helps understand. So as I had said, um Dolly, Dolly Construct or Dolly Engineering basically said it's six point seven million plus a three hundred thousand dollar contingency for a seven million dollar building. And we put on the four hundred ninety five thousand for additional equipment and stuff.
Okay, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Worship. Uh kind of changing topics, but are there any other municipal benefits? You know, like meeting room space, things like that, that this building is going to bring to the community?
Through your worship, uh we are going to be setting it up uh for rentals. Um it will have a large training room, so it will be available. Other than that, that we're building a lot of um thought into utilizing it for public education. And and in addition to that, we're going to build some training activities in there that that potentially other departments might be very interested in as well.
When you say other departments, you mean other departments internally or external?
My apologies, fire departments.
Okay, uh all right, I don't see any other hands. So uh we do have a mover and seconder, and I just want to read the recommendation again. That report PB fourteen twenty three, the fire hall final design and project direction be received and that the project proceeds as per option one, which is seven million, four hundred and ninety five thousand as a net zero fire hall, and this is for the competition of the tender process, understanding that it will come back to council. All in favor? That is carried. Good discussion. All right, item seven point three is report F I zero three twenty three. The subject is the tiered emergency response agreements with the County of Gray. It's from Jeff Deniger, our fire chief and C E M C, and I need a mover and seconder to put this on the floor. Counselor Sackle and Deputy Mayor Dickert. Jeff?
Thank you, Worship. Hanover Fire Department works closely with the Corporation of the County of Gray Emergency Medical Services. The present agreement between H F D and EMS was established in twenty eighteen and will expire in twenty twenty three. An updated agreement is required to extend the term to twenty twenty eight. An agreement with EMS is required to ensure that H F D is dispatched to appropriate emergency situations as quickly as possible. A tiered emergency response agreement lays out the terms under which the H F D would respond to emergencies at the request of the Central Ambulance Communication Center or the CAC. There are no suggested changes to the level of service identified in the agreement, but the term of the agreement must be updated. H F D continues to retain the right to decline a call due to another emergency within the municipality, which may be utilizing all available staff. At this time, the tripartite like emergency response agreement for the portions of West Gray that H F D covers must also be updated to ensure that the term of this agreement is also extended. There are no financial implications to the town of Hanover as a result of this agreement. The link to the strategic plan is both economic development as well as community and sustainable municipal operations. Recommendation is that report F I zero three two three tiered emergency response agreements with the County of Gray be received and that the mayor and the clerk be authorized to sign the attached tiered emergency response agreements with the County of Gray.
Thank you. Questions or comments, Counselor Sackle?
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Jeff, for your report. Um my question is, I'm wondering why we're amending this agreement now in June when the previous agreement actually ended February twenty first of this year? So there's a gap in there and I'm wondering how, what happens if a crisis occurs during that gap and why that happens?
Through your worship, uh the the agreement hasn't changed, so our response stays the same. And in fact, I contacted uh the uh the Chief of Emergency Services and it just got missed. Um so it, we're just catching up on the paperwork side of it.
Okay, any other Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Worship. I just, you know, compliment the department because I think it's, you know, it's important that we work together with our other emergency service providers and, you know, this is just a good example of of how that cooperation happens. And uh, you know, it's just what ensures that we have good services for our residents and our visitors to the town. So uh, good job, thank you.
Okay, I will call the question all in favor of F I zero three twenty three. That is carried. Item seven point four, uh this is report F I zero five twenty three. The subject is the Hanover firefighters remuneration proposal. Again, it's from our fire chief, Chief Deniger, and I need a mover and seconder to put this one on the floor. Counselor Fleet and Counselor Cable? Jeff?
Thank you, Worship. I should have stated before, this is on page thirty five of your package. Uh so the background, the Hanover firefighters have traditionally negotiated an updated remuneration package with the municipality every three years. The current agreement expires in December of twenty twenty three. Following a review of historical and comparative increases, attendance factors, consideration of other employee agreements, recruitment and retention strategies, and in conjunction with the C A O, the following items have been discussed with Hanover Fire Department representatives. Representatives included one firefighter, one pump operator and one officer, so a representative from each of the positions. The proposed agreement is attached, deletions are identified in black, strike through and additions are indicated in red font. I won't go through them all as they were in the report. Uh Chief Deniger, myself acted as an intermediary in the agreement update process. The Hanover firefighter representatives ratified the proposed agreement in principle. The recruitment and retention of paid on-call firefighters is becoming more challenging. It is anticipated that with these changes, it will assist with the retention of present firefighters for the future and and more agreement detail will assist in recruitment of new firefighters. The financial impacts are estimated at ninety five hundred dollars per year beginning in twenty twenty four and would be included in budget requirements. The recommendation is that report F I zero five two three firefighters remuneration proposal be received for information and that council approve the attached agreement for the term January first, twenty twenty four to December thirty first, twenty twenty seven.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Counselor Fleet?
Uh thank you, Worship. Uh thank you, Jeff, for that report. How do our hourly rates compare to uh other municipalities in Greber's?
Uh through your worship, this is part of uh human resources um uh assessment when they go out and get uh local local uh representation of of similar wages and and we're similar. Um there are some depart, every department pays differently, but it seems that everyone pays hourly now to some degree. And I would say that we're appropriate within the other areas.
Thank you.
Other questions, Counselor Hudson?
Jeff, I'm wondering if you could just explain to me uh the the timeframe runs from when they actually reach the station for the call until they're back to it? Is that how it works? Or is there, if it, if the call is um not completed because it was a false call, how does that all, how does that all transpire for the for the hourly rate?
Through you, your worship. So it uh starts the minute the pager activates. Through you, your worship. So it starts the minute the pager activates. And uh, for calls, uh, minute the pager activates until they leave the station. After a call, if it's a fire or if it's a fatality or something, we have work to do afterwards. If it's a fire, we have a lot of decontamination activities. If it's a critical, if it's um, a fatality, we have critical incident debriefs that we need to get done. So basically, it's when uh, the group of firefighters are walking out the door is when the pay stops. And so each pay is categorized. If they had to leave early, they'd note it, and then we adjust their pay. So every call gets added into the system and everyone is paid until they leave, basically.
So do you have a minimum amount of hours or maximum amount of hours, I should say, per week that somebody can work? If we had a huge run of fire calls, would they be working up to like sixty hours by any chance?
Through your worship, I hope not ever. Uh, could it happen? I, I guess, um, so, uh, but we, we would keep an eye on the fact that you need a rest break. So, um, but for the most part, it's, it's on a monthly day. We don't look at weekly. We look at monthly because it's sporadic. There's training, there's calls, there's prevention activities. So we would certainly keep an eye on an individual to make sure that they are not working beyond their capacity. Um, but as far as that's the challenge with this uh, remuneration is you never know when or how long it's going to be. So we make assessments based on previous years, and that's how we create the budget. But again, every year is so different.
So what would be an average monthly hour? How many hours monthly would perhaps one firefighter? Be filling in?
Through your worship, I'd have to run a report. Uh, and it's going to change because sometimes they're training one night a week. Sometimes it's a night and a Saturday. Sometimes we get no calls during the week, other times we'll have ten. They can sometimes come because they're not working and sometimes they can't come because they are working. And so it, it changes so much every month.
Councillor Sackle?
Thank you, your worship, and thank you for your report, Chief Denninger. So I'm thinking now after councillor Hudson's question about the fire downtown last year. What happened in that case? Were your firefighters, did they reach a certain amount of time? Did other fire departments step in to help with the hourly rate? Because you were there for a long time fighting that big fire.
Through your worship, uh, that's a great question. Um, I, I'm proud of the fact that we have very dedicated people who spent days working at the fire, leaving here, going to work, coming back, working at the fire, leaving here, going to work. Uh, there was one individual that I can remember that spent three days working between here and work. Uh, so you know, that was somebody we kept an eye on, but he, he was insistent um, that he was helping. So um, hopefully that answers your question. Yeah, um, more effectively.
So you let them work as long as they want it to and as long as you felt it was safe to do so?
Through you, your worship, it really comes down to the safety, right? So uh, if an individual is not safe, they're, they're not going to be working because there are certain activities, if you're just babysitting a, a situation like that, there was some time spent just making sure there was no flare ups. Um, so that, that's not critical work. Um, whereas if you're on top of the aerial or you're firefighting, you're actively firefighting, then yes, we have to keep an eye on your ability and your safety.
And you have a safety officer that does that, right? Watches the, that every, every incident, whether it's a fire or an accident or so. Okay, other comments, questions? I'll call the question all in favor of FI zero five twenty-three. That is carried. Item seven point five is um, report CAO seven dash twenty-three. The subject is the Water Services Agreement for forty-one Bruce Ward Bruce Road twenty-two in Brockton. It's from Sherry Walden, our CAO and Ron Cooper, Director of Public Works. And I need a mover and seconder to put this on the floor, councillor Hawking and councillor Fleet. Sherry?
Thank you, your worship. Um, so you'll recall that in December, staff were contacted by the property owners at forty-one Bruce Road twenty in the municipality of Brockton, and they had indicated that their well had gone dry, and they wondered about connecting to town water services given that our main transmission line was adjacent to their property. We advised the property owner at that time that they needed to uh, contact their municipality of Brockton staff uh, to discuss the issue and determine if they were willing to assist in that situation. We then had a meeting in late January where it was mutually agreed that both uh, Brockton and, and us, the staff would bring a report forward to our council to see if there was interest from our councils to uh, mutually or to consider a, a mutual water services agreement. So that uh, direction was provided by council, our council on February sixth. And that was through report CAO dash zero two dash twenty-three and basically council's direction to staff at that time was to uh, that we were okay to meet with Brockton staff to facilitate an agreement uh, to establish terms for provision of water services. So there've been a number of communications that have occurred during that time. And um, as noted, the property access at forty-one um, Bruce Road twenty-two in Brockton is adjacent to the Towns Main Water System Transmission Line. And therefore, um, it is favorable for connection. Um, the pro, the proposed solution is that we will, it's our staff would install water access in a curb stop and sell the property owner a water meter and remote. The property owner would be responsible for installing that water meter and therefore and the water line from the curb stop to their buildings accordingly. Um, as well, uh, a requirement is that we currently have an easement for access to those services, but we've asked that the property owner uh, and confirm and establish an easement for access through the laneway that is on a neighboring property um, for access to that um, that infrastructure and for us to access that curb stop as well. So as I said, between uh, late January and now, there've been a number of communications with Brockton. And there were prior examples of us having an agreement with Brockton when Seventh Avenue was reconstructed north of the bridge. And there was an agreement at that time for their property owners on the west side of the road to have access to town services. Specifically for this situation and this uh, circumstance, um, a council indicated uh, their consideration for providing water services, provided an agreement could be established with Brockton. Brockton has confirmed that agreement as well as the property owner, and at their May twenty-third, uh, twenty twenty-three meeting, Brockton approved the agreement and, and signed it accordingly through bylaw. Um, the following provides an overview of the Water Services Agreement, which is attached to the report, and my computer's just going to sleep here at home. So I just need to wake it up. Uh, there we go. Um, so the key parts of the agreement in summary are that, as already mentioned, the proximity to the water line and access is favorable. Um, granting this one-off request, council needs to be aware that that's likely to generate further connections to Hanover Water Services to, to, from Brockton properties adjacent to our borders. And while this property is fairly simplistic to do so, there are examples specifically along Bruce Road twenty-two where that's not as simple and nor is it as economically feasible. So it could result in further requests, and in fact, if multiple requests are granted, then we would be in fact um, supporting the development of a cluster in Brockton. Um, given that this property is um, the size of it, there is potential for it to be futurally developed. And what are the implications um, with respect to service provision? And then there's that perception of providing water services to a property that was, is not within our municipal jurisdiction when some of our own property owners do not have uh, pro, uh, access to our water services. And that a service agreement certainly is part of a much broader conversation that we'd like to have with Brockton Council. So again, that's the considerations part of the agreement. The agreement itself um, includes terms and authorization by the town and the municipality of Brockton and Hoskin Holdings, which is the property owner. It's uh, indicates specifically, and this was your council's direction to us as staff, that it only be for the existing structures located on the property at the time of the twenty twenty-three water service. So that's included in the, in the uh, agreement. It also talks about in the agreement that the property owner in Brockton are not permitted to make any extension or extensions to the water service connection without our approval, thinking future development of that property potentially. And that the property owner is responsible for all costs. So that's our cost to install the curb stop, the water meter and the remote, as well as the legal costs required to um, register the laneway access on title, as well as this agreement will be registered on title. And again, those things are important, should the property ever change hands. We will be responsible for the collection of the water charges. And should the property owner not uh, become, it, it should the property owner become in arrears with those payments, then after sixty days, Brockton has agreed that they would add that to their municipal tax rule. And at that time, we would then be reimbursed from the municipality of Brockton and hence they then go um, they would have to follow the property owner accordingly. We retain ownership and responsibility for the maintenance of the water distribution uh, system, and then there's indemnification clauses for all parties. Uh, as I said, the agreement was attached in full, so if there's further questions that I didn't highlight in that overview, by all means, uh, please ask. The financial implications, as I said, basically it's two thousand dollars is what we're estimating to be our cost to install that curb stop. Our staff would be doing that, uh, the responsibility of the owner. And then the actual water fees as per our uh, bylaw would be subject to double the rates as per the noted bylaw in the financial implication session. So the link to the strategic plan is sustainable municipal operations, and the recommendation before you is that uh, report CAO dash zero seven dash twenty-three water services at forty-one Bruce Road twenty-two Brockton be received. And that council approved bylaw to, sorry, three two six eight dash twenty-three to authorize entering into a water service agreement with the Corporation of the Municipality of Brockton and Hoskin Holdings Incorporated. That bylaw would be brought forward to our June nineteenth meeting. Um, so if there's any questions or maybe I'll refer to Ron, if he's got anything he wants to add in summary before the questions uh, through your worship. Ron, is there anything you wanted to add?
No, I think you've explained it to uh, council thoroughly. We've been working on it together, but uh, the results are as presented.
Okay, um, thanks, Ron, and thanks, Sherry. Are there any questions or comments? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, worship. Excuse me. Thank you, Sherry, for the report. The only question I had was on the Hanover retain ownership and responsibility for the maintenance operation and repair of the water distribution system. That's only the section up to the curb stop, isn't it? It's, we would not be responsible for the line from the curb stop to the residence, would we?
I was going to say, that's a wrong answer.
That is a wrong question to the curb stop only. We're providing it to, so that would be to the edge of the easement that exists as part of the uh, trunk water vein that's there now. Home water is responsible from the curb to the, to the buildings.
Yeah, that's, that's good. I just wanted to make sure of that. Thank you.
Other comments, uh, councillor Cable?
I think your worship. Um, Sherry, on the bottom of page um, forty-nine, it says that um, Brockton Stafford advised that the property owner had already established a well for water service. So are they planning to use this water access at the current time? Or are they planning to use um, a well and then how this is a backup for future?
Yeah, my understanding is that they um, after uh, and they, their preferences to, to hook up to town water. So my understanding is they will be accessing town water and what they choose to do with the well, I'm not sure of that.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, I'll call the question all in favor of report CAO zero seven twenty-three. That's carried. Okay, item eight is correspondence requiring action. We do not have any this afternoon. Item nine, reports and correspondence for information. Nine point one is FI zero four twenty-three. Community risk assessment update. It's from our fire chief, Chief Denninger and our fire prevention officer and CEMC. Jeff?
Thank you, your worship. On July first, twenty nineteen, Ontario Regulation thirty-three seventy-eight dash eighteen came into effect. This regulation was made under the FPPA or the Fire Protection and Prevention Act. Requires all municipalities to complete a community risk assessment and use this assessment to inform to inform decisions about the provision of fire protection services. A portion of this regulation states that an annual assessment of the document must be completed. Our community risk assessment allows our fire department to make informed decisions about the types and levels of fire protection services we will provide based on identified risks. With this information, our fire department is able to ensure our levels of service, programs, and activities for public edu, sorry, for public fire safety education, fire code inspections and enforcement, and emergency response directly address the identified risks and are most effective at preventing and mitigating them. The risk assessment is based on nine mandatory sections. Attached is our community risk assessment summary pages, and a complete review of the document has been completed. Any suggested changes to the document have been highlighted in red and deletions have a blue cross out. To ensure a thorough analysis, both twenty sixteen and twenty twenty-one census data have been included in the assessment documentation. Along with a small amount of administrative changes, the key changes are summarized within the chart on page four. Based on the information and risks included in the report, the present level of services provided by Hanover Fire Department is appropriate. Staff will utilize this report to plan for appropriate future activities. There are no financial implications as a result of this report. This information is being provided for information only. The recommendation is that report FI zero four two-three community risk assessment update be received for information.
Thanks, Jeff. Any comments or questions? Councillor Sackle?
Thank you, your worship. Um, thank you, Chief Denninger. I just want to comment that I was happy to see your comments on your youth, consideration of a partnership with Launchpad regarding fire safety education. I think that's a fantastic idea. So, thank you.
All right, we'll move on. Item nine point two is report ED zero three twenty-three. The subject is the Hanover Community Profile Environment Analytics. It's from April Marshall, our Economic Development Manager. April?
Thank you, your worship. Uh, so this is uh, for information, uh, to provide uh, some data to all people that love data and, and analyzing that. Um, it's um, it's very detailed. There's a lot of information to absorb. But I um, have put together this presentation to try to help break out uh, the highlights um, from the findings. And um, so I'll just start at the beginning of how this all came to be. Uh, because traditionally I would come here with census information and share those, that data with you. Uh, but we had the opportunity through EDCO, the Economic Developers Council of Ontario, and the My Main Street Program to receive this Environment Analytics. And essentially what they're doing is um, and then we also partnered locally with the Sogging Economic Development Corporation because they wanted all of our local communities to have this information. And then so we could work together on how best to leverage it and promote it to our business communities. So essentially, w- with this data, it's taking a look at Hanover and it's comparing us to Southern Ontario benchmark. But Southern Ontario minus Toronto. So they've taken Toronto right out of the mix here. And when we talk through this presentation, I'm not going to go through the whole presentation, but um, when you look at it, um, the first slide of the presentation outlines what that trade area is. So essentially, the trade area is taking our main street or our downtown and walking fifteen kilometer radius all around. So I think uh, because of the size of Hanover, we've been able to really get true data to Hanover residents, but it is excluding certain areas on the fringe. Uh, the main street visitors would be our downtown specific area. Um, so essentially, when you're looking through this presentation, anything that indexes over a hundred, so meaning when we're comparing it to that Southern Ontario benchmark, what the Hanover data is. And also, they take, Environment takes data from over eighty data sources. So it's, it's uh, very detailed and it's taking in a lot of considerations. Um, so anything indexing over a hundred is showing us that um, our result, results to the provincial uh, area average are higher. So for example, if we have an index of a hundred and fourteen, that would represent a fourteen percent higher than the provincial average. Anything below eighty is showing that we're very far below the provincial average. Uh, examples of how this data can be leveraged um, is in our business attraction efforts because we can take a look at basically um, what are, what are residents or our trade area, what they're consuming uh, consumption habits are, uh, their loyalty, uh, what kind of um, goods or services that they are seeking. And then we can take a look at what stores we have and uh, what goods or services that they are seeking. And then we can take a look at what stores we have and uh what could, what holes we might have. So for example, I would use like I am, when I look, when you look through the report, um um butcher shops or meat is, it trends very high, like uh people, that's important to people here to have that quality and having that service. So I know we have a very strong butcher outside of our area that everyone goes to, but for example, we could potentially use this to leverage attracting a butcher to our downtown. Tourism, um especially when we start to look at um the profile of who's visiting here, this really will help businesses when they're trying to attract tourism, because they can look specifically to who their ideal customer is or who's already coming here and what their habits are. So they say, like, when you're advertising, um I like to use analogy, like, don't shoot, shoot darts in the dark, right? Uh you want to narrow in specifically on who your primary demographic is. So this data that our businesses can use that to know exactly who their ideal customer is and then how best to attract them through the platforms, because it takes a look at all the social, like, social media habits, media, other traditional forms of media, like how people are absorbing this information. It can be used for our own purposes with the municipality, because we, again, we know what our residents, what their media uh habits are and where, what the best, where the best place to target them is. So, for example, I, I noticed Facebook is very trending very high through here, right? So people are spending, I think it was sixty-eight percent of their time on Facebook, and that's the most used social media platform. So that tells me that that's an opportunity for us. And I know we're not going to get all residents. I know that, I know it's, but you know, depending on ages and demographics, what they like to use, but for this purpose, this is what the data has found. Um and then again, just looking at um shopping habits. Um and then we can also you, you leverage it for when we're applying for funding. Um and we can just really focus in on uh what our greatest uh positive return on investment would be uh when we're communicating or when we're um marketing uh for attraction purposes. We can also, integrated departments can integrate it in their plans as well, when they're talking about our residents or visitors or how they would like to um utilize that information. So how are we going to get it out to the business community? Um on July the eleventh, I've been invited to speak at the Hanover Chamber of Commerce luncheon. So that will be the first opportunity to go through this presentation and really speak about what the data is telling us and hope that the businesses will be able to utilize it and leverage it uh for their own purposes. And then we're also working on our very first mayor's breakfast for business. So we um within consultation with Mayor Patterson Thursday, October the fifth, and the mornings is the date that we are going to work towards. And we're also going to bring in other departmental information uh for our business community, what is pertinent to them, but this presentation will be part of that as well. So um the links, the strategic plan is through economic development and the recommendation is that report E D zero three twenty-three Hanover Community Profile Environment Analytics be received for information. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, April. Any comments or questions? Councillor Hudson?
Thank you, your worship. I really enjoyed looking at all of this. I don't think I'm a facts and figures person, but this was very interesting to me. I'm wondering, is there going to be a presentation to the D I A as well? Um it seems like something that they could perhaps make use of. As well as, I'm wondering also with the um strategic plan, if some of this information will be funneled into that to maybe talk about revitalization for our main street as well?
Through your worship, uh councillor Hudson, yes, those are great questions. So we have definitely engaged the D I A as well. Um the chamber is our first start because they have those established luncheons. But um essentially through our Economic Tourism and Cultural Development Committee, uh we had a great conversation when going through this presentation. We have D I A rep as well as a chamber rep on there. And that's how the whole kind of mayor's breakfast idea was born, because we just realized that there's a lot of information we need to be getting to our D I A members and chamber members. So through a partnership, that's why we wanted to establish that. So yes, we will be focusing in on that. And it also has been shared with the consultants for our strategic plan, so that they can leverage it in there as well.
Great, thank you.
Councillor Cable?
Thank you, your worship. Um April, I'm just looking at um the section where it talks about Main Street visitors for two thousand twenty-one. Um it's page one ten in our um package. Do you have any idea where they pull this kind of information from? Like, I'm just wondering, is it from surveys with people from Kitchener about where they go, or is it like tracking cell phones to figure out where people are?
Yes, through your worship. Yeah, I, I did want to point out as well, we, I tried to build in the pre-COVID and post-COVID numbers, so we do see our visitation does continue to grow. And yet, I, so exactly, how they pull the data is through cell uh pings, uh they uh read license plates. Uh there's various uh ways that they get this information. And it's not your traditional survey. It's through non-traditional survey resources.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, and and just further following up to councillor Cable's comment there. It is quite surprising when you see where the, the cities that we're drawing from and, you know, like Kitchener, Toronto, Hamilton, Hanover. Hanover's actually kind of low on the list for uh for the numbers of visitors downtown, but uh with, it was very interesting read. My question is, what are Prism profiles? It's, this is turned in there that I wasn't sure what that meant.
I, I can't remember exactly what Prism stands for, but essentially, it's that, it's that whole profile that talks about who, who are most of our residents are, their demographics or who the visitor demographics are. So for instance, it was um let me just look on the proper page here. So essentially, so for the Main Street visitors, which would be the last page of their presentation, that Prism profile is that new country. It's uh the people that are more likely to visit us here are found mostly in Alberta and Ontario. New country is one of the wealthiest rural segments with nearly two-thirds working in well-paying jobs and agricultural mining, natural industries and other blue collar occupation occupations. They enjoy leisure activities like gardening, hunting, fishing and boating. They get attached their pickups and drive them for decades. So that's what the Prism profile is. So that, yeah, exactly. So that's what I was just talking about, like creating like that avatar of who our customer is, and then you can find your media outlets by targeting them through, whether it be leisure magazines or, you know, specific websites that are tailored around these common trends with those people.
Councillor Fleet?
Uh thank you, your worship, and thank you, April. It's a great report. When it comes to tourism, is it like the casino racetrack or sogging river, like uh back porch production or theater? Is that what's driving our tourism in Hanover?
I would, I would comment that those are definitely our leading assets and that is, that is driving our tourism for sure. So we need to uh look at how we can build upon that. So people that are, for instance, coming to the raceway anyways, how do we get them to also go out for dinner or spend the night or do things like that? So yeah, those are attractions that are bringing people in. And then our hope is that we give them more things to do while they're here.
Thank you.
Okay. Good report. Lots of information in that one. All right, uh nine point three, this is the Launchpad Regular Board Meeting Minutes. There's four sets of minutes. And uh they're for information and councillor Sackel is going to start.
I'm doing the March seventh meeting highlights. A board member submitted their resignation, so the board accepted that. Our program manager was to create process documents for her role to be used by staff moving forward since she was going on maternity leave. There was a discussion held regarding the repayment of the loan to the town of Hanover commencing in twenty twenty-four. The board decided to put Neptune Scoops on hold for twenty twenty-three. The board also agreed to meet with Ellie Green along with the support of Gray County Business Enterprise Centre to develop a business plan for Launchpad. It was decided that the town of Hanover is now assuming all expenditures for Launchpad and that the Economic Development Manager and the Director of Corporate Services will develop and present a budget to be reviewed by the Board of Directors. I'll turn it over now to councillor Cable.
Um so Launchpad Board met on Tuesday, March the twenty-first. And this is a joint meeting between the board and Launchpad staff to discuss proposed changes at the centre. So the financial situation was reviewed, just to kind of set the stage and make sure that staff knew where um the changes were coming from. A brainstorming session occurred looking at current offerings at Launchpad and the viability of these continuing. It was determined that the drop-in program would be paused for the spring session, um but school field trips and after-school registered programs would continue. A list of action items was developed to move the organization forward. This included the establishment of consistent rental rates uh for spaces and the industrial kitchen, updates to the website, communication around drop-in programming, and the development of a scheduling structure to make sure that um staff are using their time efficiently and that um just to look at efficiencies going forward. On April the sixteenth, the board reconvened and the primary items discussed included spring and summer programs. The board discussed potential opportunities for Launchpad, including partnerships that would help to generate revenue based on uh space rentals. Work plans were established for each staff member between um April sixteenth and the end of April to make sure that necessary tasks were accomplished before um some staff were departing. The board agreed to post for a program coordinator position to fill the program manager's maternity leave. And April was asked um to engage a known grant writer as well as the Gray County Business Enterprise Centre um to get some costing and additional information that the board could consider at a later meeting.
Okay, um I'm doing the minutes for the May second meeting. The board approved the voting privileges, the town staff representative as a Launchpad Board of Directors member. The board um is still planning to meet with Ellie Green. We now have a date of June the twenty-third to begin a business plan. Uh we're also going to have Kate Russell as a grant writer for hire, who will be part of our process and who will scribe and be our consultant. Uh there was lots of discussion regarding summer programming, um regarding a motivational speaker by the name of Greg Smith, who does a five-hour workshop called Flipping the Iceberg. There was a discussion about potential drop-in sessions during the summer, but there were no final decisions made at that meeting. The operations managers looking into a potential rental agreements and confirming bookings for the June field trips. In other business, the board reviewed the town's donation policy. They also agreed to move the Rotary Club presentation to the fall. And finally, three subcommittees were formed. Uh one is governance, which will look at policies, procedures and bylaws. The second is fundraising, who will look at donations and sponsorship. And number three is business plan slash operations, who will look at room rentals, health and safety and business plan. And the next Launchpad meeting is scheduled for tomorrow night. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? I do want to say uh thank you to the entire board for working so hard. I know you've been uh having a lot of meetings, extra meetings to uh put some plans and actions in place to help assist this uh Launchpad to become sustainable. So if you can pass that on, thank you. All right, nine point four is the Police Services Board Meeting Minutes from May the fifteenth, and I will highlight those. The board received a delegation from Peter Reed. He is the chairperson of Crime Stoppers of Gray Bruce. And just a little bit of information, since its inception in nineteen eighty-seven, eighteen thousand tips have been received, resulting in one thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven arrests and two thousand four hundred and fifty-four charges and two thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven cases cleared. So Gray Bruce Crime Stoppers is uh helping out quite a bit in the uh police services world. Um this year, in their first quarter, tips have totaled two hundred and thirteen and ten percent of those are allocated to Hanover. And a request for funding was received and it will be considered in the police uh twenty twenty-four budget. The province is waiving the fifteen thousand dollar tuition fee at the Ontario Police College. And this is an incentive to recruit more people uh to consider becoming a police officer. During Police Week, the Hanover Police Service recognized twenty-three community partners for their contributions and efforts in supporting the service. And if you follow Chief Noel on Twitter, you will have seen twenty-three photos of individuals, organizations and agencies receiving a certificate of recognition. The twenty twenty-two annual report has been completed and it will be presented at a future meeting, at a council meeting here, and will be available on the police website. Uh we also had a discussion, the Police Act requires a protocol with municipal council. And I shared that the current practice is working very well. We do receive at the, at our council meetings, monthly uh highlights from their minutes. The minutes are attached and highlighted. Uh Chief Noel presents the annual report and participates in orientation for council. And information is always available on the police website. And I um encourage you to follow Chief Noel on uh Twitter as he shares what's happening uh with the police service in Hanover here. And as an example, this was interesting, M T O, the O P P and the Hanover Police Service conducted mo- motor vehicle inspections on May tenth along uh in partnership with the P N H Centre using their backlog. And they inspected a total of uh twenty-eight vehicles. And sixteen of them were pulled out of service. And nineteen traffic violations were issued during the blitz. So that's something you don't nor normally hear about, but if you're on Twitter, you know, the chief is tweeting quite uh frequently, so it's just, it's good to know that these things are working. And the chief um for community um events, there was a coffee with the chief at the library. The service was involved with hike for hospice, McCappy Day, and the chief did a presentation to the seniors at the Village Seniors Residence on fraud. So those are the minutes. If there's any questions, I'll try and answer them, or councillor Hawking will. Okay, nine point five is the Library Board Meeting Minutes and councillor Hudson?
Thank you, your worship. The Hanover Public Library met on Wednesday, April the nineteenth. And um all four committees of the library, the Personnel Policy, Financial and Fundraising Committees all compiled the information that they'd had from their individual meetings. And the twenty twenty-two annual report is set, ready to go out to the public. The uh strategic plan that the library has happening sort of at the same time as the Town of Hanover Strategic Plan. It is uh finished and out there, ready for people to pick up and the survey, the public has until July the second to fill out the library strategic plan survey. So I encourage everyone to have a look at that and either get a paper copy or fill it out online. I'd just like to mention through the fundraising committee, the library Canadian Tire plant sale. Uh there was a hundred and forty-four volunteer hours that were um provided for Canadian Tire for that sale. And they sold three thousand two hundred and eighty-six baskets, which uh one dollar from each of those was donated to the library. So thank you to Dale and Kathy Cousins and the staff for making that fundraiser such a success. They did have um, I had spoken to one family that had been there three times that particular weekend. And they purchased about thirty baskets. They redo their whole yard and they're on the, the Mount Forest Garden Tour. So they do come from all over the place for that. Uh I just want to mention as well that the display case in the library has been changed again. They have a usually once a month or sometimes twice a month, depending upon um how much interest there are in certain things. There's a display case that they change regularly. So take a look and uh just want to make comment that the library staff this particular month, it's a Barbie display and the staff has actually created a box to look like the Barbie box and you can take your child in and have her picture taken so she looks like Barbie in a box. It's really cool. Anyway, um the other thing too that I want to mention is uh library not just for books, and this is something that I did not realize and maybe others don't as well. Is that you can check out games there, um outdoor games. So if you're having a family reunion or something for the summer, you can get uh ladder ball, ring toss, um they have a lightweight set of bocce balls. And they will also have the disc golf packages as well that they can um lend out for when we have that this golf course up and running. So uh also, also lots of indoor games as well. But they, another thing they have coming up is Coffee with a Travel Agent on June the eighth. But they, another thing they have coming up is coffee with a travel agent on June the eighth. Thank you.
And councillor Hudson, I did see your photo on the Barbie box. Was that on Twitter or Facebook? I forget now. But I did, I did see it, so very good. Okay, uh nine point six is the Downtown Improvement Area Minutes, councillor Fleet.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Uh, DIA met uh April the twentieth. Uh, I want to thank uh councillor uh Sackle for joining us. She's the older and the councillor rep. Um, I'll just go over some of the highlights. Uh, we did the downtown promotions, uh July and August, summer selfie with your favorite basket. Uh, with twenty uh six streetlights to choose from. Uh, the other one is Senior Day and Senior Day in Hanovers on Tuesdays. So we got Rexall, Ashanti Coffee, Shannon ID I Pharmacy, Hoffermill Jewellers, Queen's Hotel, or sorry, Queen's Bush Pub. My mistake, spent too much time there when I was a kid, I guess. Queen's Bush Pub, uh Paramount Theater, uh Temptation, Gibson Decor, Home Decor. Gibby Goblin, uh Tees Beauty Shop and Becker Shoes. So Tuesday is Senior Day in downtown Hanover. So I encourage all seniors to shop downtown Hanover. And that's all I have to report from the DIA.
So councillor Fleet, can I ask what age is seniors? Is it? Sixty or sixty-five?
That's a very good question. I can't answer that. I will get you an answer.
All right, yeah, because it's every place seems to be different, so um it'd be nice to know. I'm sure we're okay, we can go, right?
Yeah, uh, so each business has a different percentage, their discounts are all different, so thank you.
Yeah, very good. All right, nine point seven is the uh Soggy Municipal Airport Commission Minutes, councillor Hawking.
Uh, thank you, your worship. We met on uh Wednesday, April the nineteenth at the airport, and I'm just going to. Review uh sort of the highlights if I did, give me a minute here. After some discussion with uh Perrin Law, we have agreed uh to review our current bylaw. Which hasn't been updated since uh twenty twelve. Uh, we've been going on and off for almost six, seven months. And it was to my dismay that um. These people were, this law firm was hired to look at uh non-for-profit. And they realized that non-for-profit legislation did not apply to the Soggy or to the uh Soggy Municipal Airport. So um. Our most recent bylaws is two thousand and twelve, so we're going to uh update that at that point in time. Thanks, Vicky, for your help. It was decided not to use volunteers to address crack ceiling. Um, we have a a number of pilots who like to volunteer and um. Uh, I I checked with uh municipal staff. It really becomes a liability issue uh with um the crack ceiling. And so for for that reason. We decided to carry on with the current um vendor that we have. He does a great job. And I do want to thank the volunteers for offering, but um we we just have to ensure uh safety. Uh, rust removal. Now, I thought that was like a car rust, but it's not that at all. It's a, it's a course that pilots uh get updated on a yearly basis. So thank goodness I didn't ask the question, but I waited to be told. But anyway, it was canceled because of Transport Canada and uh federal, the the federal workers' strike, so they're going to have a on another day. And um one of our commissioners recently resigned and um we thought it was a uh um. Good, good strategy to sort of get a hold of all of our documents and regulations. And get get a package together and um Catherine McKay, our um. What I call our secretary is going to form a package and that's going to be used for orienta- orientation purposes. Because right now, we we do not have really anything formal. Those are the four main highlights of that meeting, and I'm open to any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for councillor Hawking? Okay, I don't see any. Nine point eight is the Soggy Mobility and Regional Transit. This is correspondence and I'll ask deputy mayor to highlight that.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, yeah, the intent of this letter was simply just to give the member municipalities a a quick update on some of the happenings at Soggy Mobility. Uh, we have received two of the three vehicles we ordered back in two thousand twenty-one. We're hoping the third one arrives soon, but that's just another example of the uh. Uh, supply chain issues that are going on out there. Um, we continue to investigate partnership opportunities with uh other area ride providers such as Holman Community Sports Services. Uh, Bruce and Gray Transit offerings such as GTR, Meaford, On Sound and Blue Mountains. Our two thousand twenty-two audit has been completed and copies were shared with member municipalities. Uh, it was a clean audit, no concerns uh with the operation were discovered. The smart board is looking at the possibility of offering a menu of service offerings to member municipalities. Uh, some municipalities have expressed a desire for additional services such as Sundays and extended hours through the week. And uh there's other municipalities who are looking to uh cut back on services to avoid some costs. So we're just looking at what options might be out there. And a quick update on ridership for two thousand twenty-two was uh. Twenty twenty-two, the ridership was twenty-two percent higher than two thousand twenty-one with a total of twenty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-seven rides. Uh, as for the town of Hanover, we saw thirteen point nine percent increase in that same time period. And we had a total of four thousand six hundred and nine rides in two thousand twenty-two. And that is uh the highlights of Soggy Mobility.
That's good information to share. Thank you. Okay, nine point nine, this is for information. It's a motion from the municipality of South Huron in support of school bus stop arm cameras. So we can receive this. It is in our package as uh information, or we can discuss it and decide if you want to support it or not. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, I I would like to. Support this motion in some way, shape or form. This was uh actually a discussion at the Ontario Good Roads Conference. And I shared that highlight, uh one of the highlights in my uh attendance at that conference. Where it was, I remember Adam, I think was the the title of it, and uh it was about a five-year-old uh child who was killed in a. As a motorist went past the stop arms of a stopped school bus. And uh. This is one of the things that they're suggesting would help to enforce uh. Those traffic regulations and hopefully prevent another tragedy such as that. So. I I would like to see us support this motion in some way and uh open for whatever direction would be available as far as making that happen.
Very good. Other comments? I take it the deputy mayor uh will move it? And councillor Fleet will second? Okay, so we'll support it as it reads. You're okay. All right, I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads. So we have a mover and seconder. I'll call all in favor. Here. All right, so not item ten is planning and other meetings. So um of course, all our meetings are listed on this this agenda. If anyone's looking, they're also on the website. But I do want to highlight the um public meetings. So ten point one, there is notice of a public hearing, and this is concerning a proposed minor variance. So it will occur at the Committee of Adjustment uh meeting um. On Tuesday, June the sixth at four P M. And the purpose of this application is to allow the construction. Of a one thousand square foot detached garage on the property located at two oh five eleventh Avenue. And the second one on uh the same meeting, Committee of Adjustment. And meeting on Tuesday, June sixth, again at four P M. Uh, there is a hearing for a minor variance application, and this is to vary the provisions of zoning bylaw. Uh, twenty-nine, twelve dash fifteen for an additional driveway located at four oh five to four oh seven eleventh Avenue. And I just want to check with Andrew, is this uh virtual or in person?
Uh, virtual.
Okay, thank you. So virtual, uh June the sixth at four P M, Committee of Adjustments. And item ten point two, there is notice of a public meeting. This is concerning a proposed zoning bylaw amendment. It is Monday, June nineteenth at four P M at a council, our council meeting here. It's in the chambers. Proposed zoning bylaw amendment is for housekeeping items. And the second one, same thing, June nineteenth, four P M, proposed. Uh, zoning bylaw amendment to rezone the land from residential type one, which is R one to residential type three, which is R three. Uh, to allow the construction of a triplex dwelling to be constructed on the lands known as six forty-two tenth Avenue. So that will be at our next meeting. So dates to remember and announcements, the Audit Committee meeting will be Monday, June nineteenth at three P M. Yes?
Mayor Patterson, through your worship, if we could just make an adjustment to that meeting day, we received notification today. Um, that the documents won't be ready in time for that meeting. It's been deferred to July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three at three P M.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we are not meeting at three P M on the nineteenth. So uh the council meeting will start at four P M. On June nineteenth. And at this time, I'll ask, are there any notices of motion? Seeing none, we do not have a closed meeting. I need a mover and seconder to adjourn at five forty-one. Councillor Cable and councillor Sackle, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you very much.